Here.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the minutes reflect, Jamie, that this meeting is held in compliance with the open meeting law. Approval or changes to the order of the agenda as published. Any questions on the agenda? Any changes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Lee.
Second.
Second by Scott. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. June 3rd minutes, does everybody have a chance to review them? Any questions or corrections on those? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the meeting minutes.
Moved by John, second by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Public comment, this evening we have Mike Peters from WPPI Energy, the power of great places. And Mike is going to give us a presentation. If you'd like to come up to the podium, Mike?
Great, thank you very much. Here's a handout. Thank you. Mayor, thank you. Members of the commission appreciate the opportunity to appear on your agenda tonight. Please feel free to ask any questions at any time. I'd much prefer going through and answering your questions, knowing that you get the information you're seeking versus going through the PowerPoint. But I'll use it to guide my comments tonight and we'll see where it goes. But I do appreciate the time and the partnership that WPPI and Algoma have shared for many years. I am Mike Peters, President and CEO of WPPI Energy. We are your wholesale power supplier and service provider to allow you to be a stronger, more capable municipal utility than what you would otherwise be on your own. As an overview, I'd like to talk about public power in general. Talk a little bit about the benefits of being a municipal utility and what you bring to your community. Your member ownership in WPPI Energy and what that means for Algoma and the citizens. Just some general industry and business updates that impact WPPI and ultimately impact our members and the customers that you serve. And then how we go about partnering with Algoma to provide services ultimately to your customers. So first, let's talk a little bit about public power. Algoma shares the benefit of being a municipal utility along with 80 other municipalities in the state of Wisconsin. So you are amongst a large group of cities that have elected many years ago, well over 100 years ago, for many of the municipal utilities to provide electric service to their citizens through a municipally-owned utility. Typically municipal utilities have lower rates, they have better quality of service because it is a compact service district. You have your linemen, you have four linemen, they live right here nearby the city and can respond very quickly. They're focused on just the city of Algoma. And so if there's an outage or an issue that you have to respond to, you are their number one priority. And that may not be the case if you were just part of a larger investor-owned utility. You have local ownership and control. You can make decisions about your policies on how you want your billing policies in compliance with the Public Service Commission rules. But you can look at those rules and you can make accommodations that other utilities may not be able to do. As I said, reliability is probably one of the key differentiators and low cost. Without very few exceptions, municipal utilities typically have lower costs. You have a lower cost of capital. So when you're investing in your power lines, you only need to service debt. You don't need to pay a return to shareholders and have a much higher return on that investment. And so ultimately that leads to a lower average power cost to your customers. WPPI is in the same boat, we're a not-for-profit entity, just like your utility. And we had an opportunity to look at a project a few years ago and we were going to partner with the investor-owned utilities in this group. And the exact same project, us making an investment on the same level with the other partners, our cost would have been 11% lower than the investor-owned utilities' cost for that same, just because our cost of capital, just similar to what Algoma would have available to you. So lower costs, more reliable service, decision-making at the local level, all lead to what is perceived to be and ultimately is a better utility model. You're not alone. Nationally, there is 48 million people in the United States that are served by municipal utilities. And these range in size from the city of Los Angeles being a municipal utility, Austin, San Antonio, Seattle, Orlando, very big cities, all the way down to municipal utilities with fewer than 500 or 1,000 customers. So municipal utilities across the country run the gamut. There's over 1,400 municipal utilities in the United States. And one in seven customers receive their electric service from a municipal utility. This slide shows the various sizes of... Go to the next one. Yeah, so as you can see, the vast majority of municipal utilities have under 4,000 customers. There's over 1,300 municipal utilities in the U.S. that have 4,000 or fewer customers. So Algoma is not, you know, an outlier. You have about 2,000 customers. So you are well within that group of over 1,300 municipal utilities. So that's not unusual to have a municipal utility the size of Algoma. As I said, in Wisconsin, there's 81 municipal electric utilities. Collectively, we distribute to 11% of the total electricity served in the state comes from a municipal entity. Collectively, we have about 300,000 municipal customers within the state of Wisconsin. And as you can see from sales and revenue, it's not an inconsequential amount. And then payments in lieu of taxes is another differentiator for municipal utilities. Collectively, municipal utilities give back to their cities over $23 million. And Algoma is part of that as well, giving back $165,000 in pilot payments or payment in lieu of taxes back to the city from the electric side and another $178,000 in payment in lieu of taxes on the water side. So not only do you have the benefit of the reliable service, lower cost, you also have the payment in lieu of taxes, which is more than what you would typically get from an investor-owned utility if they were owning those assets within the city. So from an Algoma perspective, as I said, you've got over 2,000 customers and you're well within that 1,300 or so municipal utilities across the country. You have nine full-time employees that provide service to your customers. And you have something that is really beneficial and that is local control through the utility commission. You can make decisions on how your utility wants to be run. Let's talk a little bit about, do you have any questions on just municipal utilities in general, public power in general? We'll talk a little bit about WPPI. So we were created in 1980. Prior to WPPI being incorporated, municipal utilities had very limited choices of where to get their electricity. They could self-generate. And typically for smaller municipal utilities, they didn't have a lot of options. They could either own a diesel generator. Some municipal utilities were blessed to have hydro facilities nearby. Coconna is a good example of that, that had hydro facilities that are well over 100 years old. If they were large enough, a municipal utility might be able to build a small coal plant. Manitowoc is a good example of that. But for the most part, municipal utilities had to buy power from the investor-owned utility that was surrounding their service area. That was really your only option. You didn't have the option of using their transmission system to go someplace and buy cheaper power. So you were really a captive customer to that investor-owned utility. In the '70s, municipal utilities across the country started seeing the benefit of banding together and forming larger organizations to give them economies of scale. So they could negotiate better contracts with investor-owned utilities. Ultimately, they could own assets or enter into long-term power purchase agreements on a bigger scale than an individual municipal utility entity could do. And that's how WPPI became incorporated in 1980. We are actually a subdivision of the state of Wisconsin. We are a municipal utility. We're not-for-profit. We are member-controlled. We have a 51-member board of directors. Pete sits on our board, Nancy's the alternate. And so they make decisions about what our budget's going to be. They make decisions about what our wholesale power rate's going to be. They make decisions about bylaw changes, our contracts that we have with our members. That all goes to our board of directors, just like your commission makes decisions about your utility, our board does the same thing. As a utility, WPPI, we are 51 members today. We started out with 23. And you look at us as a utility today, collectively, we're larger than Madison Gas and Electric, which is a decent-sized investor-owned utility in the state of Wisconsin. Alliant Energy and Webco are larger. But we're able to do a lot of the same things for our members that Alliant and Webco do for their customers. We're able to provide the same kinds of services to you that ultimately pass on to your customers as well. Flip to the next one. So from our perspective, the 51 members, we have the ability to provide a diverse power supply portfolio. Shared services and advocacy are the three areas where WPPI concentrates our efforts. So let's talk a little bit about our power supply in general. I gave you a handout sheet, it's called WPPI at a glance. There's a lot of information in here about the resources WPPI has to serve our member communities. If you think about the size of Algoma and about some of the collective size of WPPI, we're able to deliver to Algoma a power supply mix that you would never be able to do on your own. From renewables, natural gas, we do have interest in coal plants, we buy out of the Point Beach Nuclear Plant, we buy 162 megawatts of power out of the Point Beach Nuclear Plant, which is substantially more than any one individual member of WPPI Energy. But we're large enough as an entity that we can do that on behalf of our members and you get the benefit of being part of that larger organization. The picture you see here is the Bishop Hill Wind Energy Center. It's 132-megawatt wind farm in northern Illinois. It came online in June of 2018. In 2016, we had open space or we had a need for additional resources and we did a request for proposals. And we were not necessarily looking at just renewables, we were looking at what our options were to bring additional resources into our portfolio. And after going through that process, we found that this project, along with the Point Beach Solar Project, which we signed a contract as well, were the two projects that were lower cost, would reduce our power supply cost compared to the other projects that we had available. So we've been able to add renewables to our portfolio. We've been able to meet a lot of the membership demands for adding new renewables and reducing our emissions profile. And we've been able to do that at an average power cost that has continued to decline. This chart shows what our power costs have been from 2014 projected out to the year 2023. As you can see, they've actually come down from where they were at in 2014. Our projected average power cost for 2019 is actually equal to what it was in 2009. And so we've been relatively flat for a long period of time. And when you project out over the next five years, it's going to continue to be relatively flat and projected to be lower than it was in 2017. So from a power supply cost standpoint, we've been able to maintain average, our average rates have been able to remain relatively flat. At the same time, we've been able to increase renewables in our portfolio and deliver that benefit to you as one of our members. Any questions about our power supply resources? Let's talk about just services in general. How many here have used their phone to buy something on Amazon or read a book or look up your cellphone bill or any of those things that we now consider common practice from a business standpoint? We know customers expect that of the service providers that they deal with, whether it's their bank or their cellphone company or their electric utility. And we've been on a path over the last seven or eight years to put in place the technology that allows your customers ultimately to have that same level of service using our billing software and some additional software enhancements that we're putting in place. Our members now have the ability to allow customers to pay online, to review their bills after the month, et cetera. So that same level of service technology is available to our members and our members are stepping into it when it's appropriate for them to do that. We have 51 members and if all 51 said we want this service today, it would be a challenge for us to do that. So we're seeing about five to six, seven of our members each year add to their services through the WPPI portfolios where they are allowed, are adding the customer portal so the customers can see their bill or pay their bills online or make inquiries to the utility through that web portal. So that's, again, an enhancement that we know your customers expect you to get to. And when you're ready and able, that'll be available to you as a utility, as a member of WPPI. Some other areas where we have focused our efforts, cyber is a big issue, cybersecurity. We have seen, actually, some of our members have had cyber incidents, whether it's been malware or ransomware, if you may have heard of. Those have impacted some of our members. We've had some members that have had their emails hacked into. And so we've provided a service now where we have two full-time network engineers that maintain security for our systems. And we now make that available to our member communities if that's something that they're interested in doing. And we've had about six that have stepped up and we have about that many more that are lined up over the next couple of months to add that as a service for them as well. Shared meter tech is another service that we've been providing. It allows our, we've seen communities where a long-term meter tech might be retiring or might need additional help. We've been able to provide like 5% of an employee's time to assist your local people on maybe more technical metering issues. Retail rate work, we've worked with Algoma on doing your retail rates at the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. We do benchmark studies for you. We provide data to you so that you can have a better understanding of how you compare to the other utilities in the area, other municipal utilities and the investor-owned utilities and co-ops that you might compete against. All of this is done through our 105 employees at WPPI Energy that we truly are part of your utility as a partnership. We provide a lot of backroom support that, you know, we're not interfacing directly with your customers. We interface with your staff who in turn is the utility in your customers' eyes and that's the way it's been structured. The last bit I'd like to talk about is advocacy. I've been involved in utility issues since 1985. And I can tell you the most effective group of lobbyists, lobbyists sort of get a bad term, but really lobbyists are educators. The most effective group of lobbyists that I've ever seen is a group of mayors, a group of elected council members that go back and either talk to their elected officials in Madison or go with us to DC when we have an issue. And they advocate on behalf of their citizens because you truly are here to look out for the interests of your citizens, your customers. And that's where WPPI helps coordinate those efforts on your behalf. A number of issues that we've focused on over the last couple of years, municipal bonds is always under attack, the abilities for, the ability of municipal utilities or municipals in general to issue tax-exempt bonds is always on the chopping block. It's been protected year after year because the elected officials in DC ultimately see the benefit of maintaining that. So you can continue to maintain your infrastructure at a cost that is as low as possible for issuing that money. Local control has always been important to us. We want to make sure that you have the ability to make decisions, not somebody in Madison to the extent that we can protect that or even Washington DC. We want to make sure decisions can be made locally on issues that affect your utility and your customers. And then cybersecurity, as I talked about. There's been a number of bills introduced in Congress that would impose a one-size-fits-all approach to cybersecurity issues. So the same rules that would apply to a Webco would apply to an Algoma Utilities and we really don't think that makes a lot of sense. And so we've been advocating for measures that are appropriate for the size of the utility and the risk that that utility brings to the bulk electric system. So with that, a couple of key takeaways. Algoma is fortunate to have a municipal utility. You have a very well-run municipal utility. We have, you're competitive from a rate standpoint, your reliability is very high, you're able to provide the services that your customers want and doing it in a manner that is governed locally by the utility commission. We know that we're in a partnership and we have 51 partners that we work with every day. And we greatly appreciate the support and partnership that we have with Algoma. Be happy to answer any questions you have about WPPI, about municipal utilities, about the industry in general. But I do appreciate the time on your agenda and look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Jake, anything Jake? Lee? Mitch?
No.
John?
No.
Kevin?
No, thank you.
Anybody in the audience have any questions of Mike? Hearing none, thank you Mike for your time, I appreciate it.
You were way too easy.
Thanks for the drive up.
Thank you. I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Next, under public comment, we have John Pavick talk about the KCEDC update. Are you going to do it from your, right here or do you want to go up there?
As the city's representative, I can't do it from here.
That's fine.
So as such, I attended the June 20th Executive Board meeting for the Kiwanee Economic Development Committee. They provided 14 goals for 2019. They're in broad categories of workforce development, business retention and expansion, business attraction, entrepreneur development, and KCEDC capacity building. With respect to workforce development, they're looking at the Coordinating Manufacturing Career Day, which is going to be hosted here in Algoma in October, and I think they gave the dates as the 15th and 16th. They're also, will be assisting all three school districts with their youth apprenticeship programs. For business retention and expansion, they're planning on completing 40 business retention visits, hosting six stakeholder roundtables, explore economic gardening program, I'm not sure what that is yet. Business attraction, the enter acreage and building space data into locate in Wisconsin website and update quarterly. Also explore the return on investment of community venture network memberships. Entrepreneur development, they're talking about walk-in, work with the small business folks to offer at least one entrepreneurship training courses, course such as Fast Track or Next Level that provides intensive training for potential entrepreneurs. And they're going to be looking at tools for business success, resources to start and grow your business. Finally, with KCEDC capacity building, they're completing 15 meetings with local, regional, and state officials, continue to grow private investment in the organization, add committees and task forces as needed to accomplish organizational economic development goals, and hire an assistant by July 15th. The executive director is really doing an awful lot of, awful lot of things, writing, visiting, making outreach calls, things of that nature. So, and that's all I had from KCEDC.
Anybody have any questions of John's report? Are there any other parties that want to speak tonight on your public comments? Hearing none, we're going to move on then to consideration of general bills and credit card payments. Any questions on any of the bills or credit card payments? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve all the general bills with the exception of Verly Gunworks.
So moved.
Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Roll call vote, please.
Mary?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
Meffordin?
Yes.
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 Then I would accept a motion to approve Verly Gunworks.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie, second by Lee. Roll call vote, please.
I'll get it right this time. Russell?
Yes.
Weez?
Yes.
Meffordin?
Yes.
Havick?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Dashlet?
Yes.
I got it.
Okay Jeff, thank you. All right. There are no other claims before the city other than the one that we have pending.
Right.
Thank you. I see there's no request for any conference attendance. Then we're going to go right into our committee reports. We'll start out with finance and personnel. Finance and personnel was called order on Wednesday, June 19th at 8:30 a.m. by yours truly. The role was taken and the minutes reflect that this meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. Consideration of bills and claims and conference attendance was gone over and approved the bills and credit cards for payment recommendation to the council. Under public comment, Kathy Pavick, representing the Friends of Crescent Beach, spoke on the dangers of coal tar application and their support of a ban prohibiting the use of coal tar in the city of Algoma. Ronnie Hamm, a resident at 709 Third Street, spoke in regards to a home at 721 Third Street that the neighborhood refers to as blighted. She asked that something be done to address the current condition of the home and the city be more proactive in addressing blighted and nuisance properties. Under whole business, the committee discussed their concerns about the use of coal tar and they were going to research a ordinance and hopefully come back with something at the finance and personnel committee in July. There was also a motion made in second to approve my appointment of Anthony Nazi as a student representative to the Community Development Committee. That motion was carried. There was also a motion made in second to recommend the common council authorize an agreement with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue for state debt collections. That motion carried. There was also a motion made in second to recommend the common council approve setting a monthly stipend for a cable volunteer for YouTube video uploads. That motion was also carried. There was a motion made in second to approve the purchase of the 2019 Venner drum-style chipper, which is purchased in partnership with the Algoma Utility, and that was approved. There was also a motion made in second to forward ordinance 8112 relating to the confidentiality of information about income and expenses requested by the assessor in property assessment matters in the city of Algoma. The first reading will be at the July 2019 council meeting. Public Works Director Matt Murphy provided information regarding change order number one for the South Lake Street Sewer and Water Project. And before I go any further, I'm going to have Matt discuss that because there were some questions that came up about that change order and there was a little confusion, but Matt has an update on that. So Matt, if you'd like to give us that right now.
Yeah, I showed the whole committee the map. After talking with Pete over at the utilities and bringing it back through my public works and explaining it, I think it makes a lot more sense to put that addition in at the time. The actual cost of it will be $18,760. That is in the original bid, so this is not an extra. This was with the loop going in, there was a deduction to the city coming back of $166,516.39. So that'll stay in there. And what this is going to do is that water main will get us out of the highway right away, Highway 42 right away and bring us onto County K. That's where it will stop there. And I think it's more beneficial for the city at that time to not have to, for the cost of it first of all. And second of all, we'll be out of there if we ever in the future, the city does decide to move forward with that loop, that we will take off on County K instead of coming back and having to get across the highway. So, does anybody have any questions about it or is it, tried to explain it to everybody by showing them the map?
Good. Thanks Matt for the update. Then the committee discussed an Economic Development 101 for Local Leaders course being offered in Kiwanee County later this year. We were trying to get an idea of how many people would be interested. There's possibly seven from the city of Algoma that would be interested in taking that class. Then the committee discussed the condition of the south pier wall and the need for improvements to increase safety. If you're familiar with the south pier, the entryway to get on the pier is very unstable. It's very rocky. We had Matt had met with the Corps of Engineer People some time ago. They definitely agree that there needs to be something done, but of course, like anything else in government, there's no money available. So what we did is I encouraged the different committees to write a letter. I put a letter together with the help of the clerk and sent it off to all our representatives, both at the federal level and at the state level. So I'm encouraging other people to do the same. And hopefully if we put enough pressure on them, they'll find some money and we can get that done yet in 2019. Jamie Jackson informed the committee of the discontinuance of the free software used for meeting packet distribution. Since we went to the iPads after last year's budget, there's a program that Jamie uses to get all the information out to everybody on the council and myself as far as the agendas and everything like that. And it was a program that we were not being charged for, but they're coming back and telling you they want, what, $3,000 a month? coming back and telling you they want, what, $3,000 a month, a year, to have this program, it's not feasible for us to spend that kinda money, so Jamie's working on some other avenues, and hopefully we can continue. The iPads have saved us a lot of money, not only in paper and copies, but it makes it a lot easier for everybody to have everything right at their fingertips, so I don't know how you're doing on that, if we're gonna have something shortly, but I know that you're dedicated to finding a way to save the city money. Then also, the, the committee discussed issues of property maintenance and the city ordinances that address property maintenance. Alderman Pavich recapped the meeting that he held with concerned citizens of Ward 1, and that's with the property on Third Street. We are moving forward with that, I did have discussions with the property owner, he did come in and apply for the proper permits, he tells us once the permits are obtained, he will hire a contractor, and hopefully that, that property will be brought up to the standards that the people in that ward are expecting. Public Works Director Matt Murphy presented the Public Works Committee and the recommendation of the committee that the city continue to pay for repairs done to sewer laterals in the street from the curb stop to the main where a property owner has work done in the portion of the sewer lateral. There was some concern about having the property owner pay for that, but the council decided that it would continue to be paid for by the city at large. There was also recent dialogue, we talked about on the appointments for the utility commission, there was some discussion about that, but basically, in the end, the council said to let it remain as it is. There was also a concern, meeting agenda items for July, there'll be a meeting including the review of current liquor license ordinance and discussion of any recommended changes and enforcement of that ordinance. There was a motion to go into closed session, we went into closed session, we came out of closed session, and there was a motion made and seconded to let the records reflect that Police Chief Randy Remicker has satisfactorily completed his six-month probationary period. Motion was carried, the meeting agenda adjourned at 10:30, 3:00 a.m. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much, then we will move on to protections of persons and property, Scott.
Sure, Mayor. The meeting of the Protection and Persons and Property Committee was called order at 4:00 p.m. on Monday, June 24th, City Hall, all members were present, both the agenda and the meeting minutes were approved, there was nobody there for public comment. Under department reports, Kelly Cos presented the report for Algoma Rescue. Total calls to date for the month of June were 51, year-to-date were 189. There was a request to move current members Kelly, Linsley, Dashlet, and Austin Lee as basic amtes to regular member status, that was voted on by the committee and approved. Along with the Algoma Fire Department, the Algoma Rescue participated in, I'm sorry, they participated in an active shooter training drill on June 19th at the Algoma High School. Both the fire chief and Kelly said that that was a great learning experience, heaven forbid we ever have to do anything for that, but it was, it's good to be prepared. Kelly Cos, Mitch Russell, and Lynn Sheizer attended a free training seminar for stroke treatment in May. Chief Ackerman provided the report for the fire department. Total, there was four calls since the last report. The relocation project for the air compressor for the fire department is complete, and it is in working service. They participated in a child fishing event that was held on June 15th, that went very well. As aforementioned, they also participated in the active shooter training. They also participated in the blessing of the fleet ceremony on June 21st, which also went very well. They took receipt of a new ice-making machine, which was donated by a Manitowoc company, the old one was almost 20 years old, and from my understanding, the new one was greatly appreciated and working well. Police Chief Randy Remicker provided the report for police department, calls of service for the month of June were 135 at the time, total year-to-date calls were 703. The FTO training was discussed, and a brief update on that, and regards also, an update regarding the hiring process was provided. The bicycles are being brought out for patrol, which is going well, they have a squad car that is in the shop for engine repair. The CVR installation will be done the first week in July, we should be up and running the first week in August for the vehicle registration here at City Hall. Use of the speed trailer, as citizens are aware, is ongoing, you may see that around town. There were no requests for seminars or conference trainings, the bills were approved. Under old business, the committee reviewed a chicken license application and ordinance, which were both approved. Under new business, the committee, we talked about the parking update for Northwater Street during the Second Street Bridge construction. Parking is going to be prohibited on both sides of Northwater, in lieu of just one side as initially discussed, this is, this is for the safety of all motorists and pedestrians all involved. John Pavick gave an update for the Kiwanee County Public Safety Building Initiative, which was discussed earlier. We discussed the kennel license review for 602 Ohio. We also went over the event policy and procedures, event application where there was a small change to the verbiage that was recommended. We went through license applications, all of the operators' license renewals and temporary Class B license, all of those were approved, there was no issues with any of them. Discussed items, agenda items for next month. Under new business, we went into closed session to discuss the vacant full-time police officer position, went into closed session at 5:12, came out of closed session at 5:26, and the committee moved to make a conditional job offer to the candidate contingent upon passing all the pre-employment testing. The next meeting is scheduled for July 29th at 4:00 p.m., and the meeting adjourned at 5:28.
Questions or comments? Randy, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. Let's move on to Marina, John?
The Marina Committee was called order at 5:00 p.m. on June 18th, we were down at the Marina itself. Everyone was there except for Ryan Klessig, and that's important because we have to have both Steve Lutke and Ryan Klessig at the same meeting in order to approve the March minutes.
Has this been ongoing?
It's been ongoing, either one or the other is not there, and the meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law, the agenda was approved, and as were the minutes for the, for the May 21st meeting. The March 19th meeting are still pending approval. There was no public comment, there was no correspondence received. Approval of bills, all bills reviewed, motion to approve made by Lutke, seconded by Levy, motion was carried. Managers' reports, the, Arnie Mueller reported that the flashing on the shed overhead door is bent and interfering with the closing of the door. Matt Murphy was going to go ahead and evaluate that and either make the repair or advise what should be done. There are new hours going into effect, seasonal hours, starting on that Friday, Marina was, will be staffed from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the remainder of the fishing season, shifts will be split 6:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. and 12:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. A TV was donated by Mr. John Duran, who has, who has a slip at the Marina, and the TV's on the second floor of the Marina Building, so they accepted that donation. Public Works, the Porta Pier delays continue, the river wall dock, excuse me.
Sounds like a deep-giving report, huh?
Yeah.
Good music.
It's not bad music. My apologies. To my great embarrassment.
Tell your wife to call later.
No, she'll tell me later. I should've turned it off, and she'd be right. Porta Pier delays continue, the river wall docks are now 60% complete, Porta Pier is expected to be working this weekend on the dock, and extensions to the fuel, fuel pier guides were successfully completed. Kudos and thanks to Guy Fournette, Casey Russell, and Matt Murphy for accomplishing that task. We're now no longer in danger of losing our fuel pier because it overran the guides. Old business, the river dock wall is 60% complete, Matt is following up with Porta Pier to, as to when they can get back to finish the work, it's been a challenge, is that a good term?
Yes.
Under new business, there was discussion of Purple Heart recipient receiving free annual boat launch sticker. In reviewing the request, it was noted that the comparison to Brown County, which was brought forward, issuing these was not comparable. The Brown County was operating the launch sites and providing this free sticker to county residents only. The person requesting the free sticker is not an Algoma resident, and therefore not supporting the city through their tax dollars. Motion by Lutke, seconded by Levy, to deny this request for free annual boat launch sticker for Purple Heart recipients, roll call vote, four yes, zero no, motion carried. If this comes up again from a city resident, it would be reconsidered. Bundling Marina services, discussion of possible, possibly bundling gas purchases with sanitary system pumpouts, it was viewed as unfair to slip renters to offer, to bundle services that are included in the slip fee only based on fuel purchase. Pumpouts require staff time, as this paid through the slip rentals. Motion by Lutke to keep the services as they currently exist, not to offer bundled service, it was seconded by Mary, motion was carried. Items for next agenda, the Dock A build update, the River Dock update, also question about hepatitis immunizations for pumpout staff will be discussed, as well as handrail maintenance approach for prepping, priming, and painting in the marine area. Next meeting, July 16th at 5:00 p.m. at the Marina. See you there.
Any questions or comments? I'll just, I'll make a slight comment, we, everybody's aware of the issue that the city of Kiwanee is having with their Marina, and I extended out an invite to them some time ago, that anybody that has a Kiwanee, city of Kiwanee seasonal launch sticker could use the city of Algoma's Marina without charge, and the reason I did that is because when we had the Marina fire, and while Marina was closed, they extended that out to us. Since that, they've had a little bit of a more serious problem in Kiwanee, so they have closed their Marina indefinitely. I extended that invite out, the mayor approached me and asked me if we would extend the invite out to go through the fishing season, we talked to Matt, and they talked to Arnie and staff, and we've decided we will extend it out until we actually close our Marina sometime in October. So anybody that is in the city of Kiwanee that has a seasonal pass, launch pass can come to Algoma and launch for nothing, so. Okay, let's move on to Park and Rec, Kevin. Thanks, John.
Park and Rec Committee met on June 18th at 7:00 p.m., all members were present, Sarah Olonechek was excused. We'd like to welcome Erica Berger to the Parks Committee as our student representative. We approved the agenda, April minutes, and the bills. Under old business, we had for rentals, one youth club rental, two park rentals, three picnic tables, and then Trailblazer tourney and Bay Care bike rodeo. Under cemetery report, cemetery committee guys have been doing their general maintenance. Several graves need seeding, we talked to the contractor on that, they'll be taking care of that. Roof chimney needs patching, we're gonna see if the cemetery crew can do that. Under Parks Report, under programming update, colored pencil art class for teens will be held this summer at the youth club, it will run for six weeks from June 19th to July 24th. Summer park program will begin July 1st and run to August 8th. The park will be closed on July 4th, we'll continue to have free lunch for the youth under 18. Art on the Wild Side will be at Prairie Field from July 1st to July 5th. T-ball for five and six-year-olds will be held for six weeks from June 19th to July 24th. Super Swim Week at the YMCA for children 5 to 10 will be August 12th through August 15th. Community building update, we're having some issues with our sidewalk by the gym doors, we're gonna get that in our budget for 2020. Discuss high-level waters at the Dog Park, Mitch is gonna see if we can get some plastic pallets. Parks update, Trailblazer Tournament ended up using all of our Diamond Drive, we're gonna order some more of that. Summer work crew is working out nicely. Crescent Beach update, Friends of Crescent Beach have done some boardwalk cleaning projects and will help us with replacing nails with screws on the boardwalk. They're organizing the volunteer efforts for the weekend pickups on the beach, thank you very much for all that you do. New business, we discussed the issuance of dog waste in parks in the city, we're recommending that, go to the PP Committee for a city ordinance. We talked about expired comprehensive plan, we're gonna discuss that in the July finance meeting. Robertson informed the committee about the need for first responders to have keys to the youth club, we'll look into different options to have a lockbox possibly at the building. Next meeting is July 24th at the youth club, we adjourned at 7:50 p.m.
Questions or comments? Sarah, oops, go ahead, John.
I have one question, with the six-week art class, is there gonna be a showing at the end of it, or the rendering's gonna be posted anywhere?
We absolutely should do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Talk to your participants and see if they're willing to do that.
Anything else to add, Sarah, to the report?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks, Kevin. Let's move on to Public Works, Lee.
Public Works Committee on June 25th was called order by Chairman Dashlet at 4:02 p.m. at City Hall in accordance to the open meeting law. All members were present, also present Matt Murphy, Pete Hawk, and Russ Stoller, excused was Jeff Huffman, who has Rep. Approval of or changes to the agenda, there was a motion, it was seconded, motion carried to approval of the previous meeting minutes, there was a motion to approve, seconded and motion carried, no public comment. Presentation of bills, there was motion and seconded and motion carried to approve the bills. Street sewer credit, discussion on sewer credit that was denied for 611 Cleveland Street, after lengthy discussion, no action was taken. Sewer credit for Kirk and Tina Fleishman on Buchanan Street was approved. Reports wastewater treatment facility report was not given as who has representative was absent. The committee reviewed and no questions were asked. Matt Murphy gave his report in 219. Roadwork going on Second Street Bridge project and South 42 Highway addition to sewer water and storm project. Matt explained the change order, and no action was taken. Discussion on streetlights for Second Street Bridge and First Street project, motion was made and seconded to go to standard light pole, not a decorative pole, motion carried. Matt reported the Northwater repair work should be done by June 26th, then Peters will be out of the city till August. Old business, discussion on large item pickup, that was tabled, also discussion on water lateral ordinance along with permits being taken out when doing any work in the city, when opening the city streets, tabled until further meeting with more info. New business, motion was made and seconded and recommended that the city move forward with the next phase of the wastewater treatment facility repairs, water filter, filter building repairs and process control, motion was carried. Next meeting is July 30th at 4:00 p.m. City Hall, there was a motion to adjourn at 5:20 p.m., was seconded and motion carried.
Any questions or comments? Matt, do you have anything to add, especially now that the Second Street Bridge is totally closed?
Yeah, I guess just a little information, starting at 7:00 this morning, the Second Street Bridge is totally closed for vehicle travel, and sidewalks pedestrians will not be able to walk over the Second Street Bridge. The detour, the detour, excuse me, the detour has been posted by the county, all the signs are turned around this morning, so that takes you over the Fourth Street Bridge, and takes you up 42 to the north. You can take Northwater, like that was mentioned earlier, that is posted for no parking on both. on both sides of the street, um, and, and take that over and take County S. up, uh, north if you would like as well. But that's about it.
I am in discussion with, uh, Mr. Carey of Monarch about allowing, uh, especially the residents around there and the town of Annaphe if they have a meeting to park in that lot. Um, he had left me a message and we were playing telephone tag today. In essence, he said he doesn't have an issue with that, but I wanna talk to him personally before we get the word out on that, so. Um, the other thing I think we need to reiterate, there is no spring or fall cleanup this year.
Right.
And you are looking at other options, but that would be for two thousand twenty, correct?
That is correct.
So people know that, uh, we're not gonna do anything. Okay, thank you both for that. Appreciate it. Uh, let's move on to the Planning Commission. Yours truly. Again, this meeting was called to order on June twenty-seventh at seven P M. Uh, the role was taken and, uh, the meeting was held in compliance with the open meeting law. There was nobody here to appear under public comment. Old business, uh, there was no old business to come before the commission. New business, um, motion was made and seconded to recommend to the council to approve a division of land requests between Bucks Harbor LLC and also Douglas and Heidi Johnson. Commission also continued the discussion of allowing storied structures as a permitted use in a residential and agriculture district. Uh, right now, the ordinance states that before you can put up a storied structure, you must have a permanent resident, uh, located in that, uh, area. After further discussion, we do, directed the city clerk to basically draw up a sample ordinance to, uh, look at allowing storied structures. That'll be talked about in our next Planning Commission meeting sometime in July. Meeting was adjourned at, uh, seven forty-four P M. Questions or comments? Hearing none? Then we'll move on to tourism and promotion. There's nothing, CDC, nothing, cable, nothing. Library, Jake.
Oh, boy. It's my turn.
Yes, it is.
Okay, uh, just briefly, though, I'd like to, uh, while there was no cable committee meeting, I would like to, uh, update the city council about, uh, a letter that was composed by our, uh, station producer, Amber Shallow, uh, regarding Measure Fifty that was passed by the, uh, state legislature encouraging Governor Evers to veto that legislation because it would adversely affect, uh, the city's ability to charge a franchise fee to, uh, our cable provider, which is what we use to fund our TV station. So I sent that letter off, uh, last week. Uh, there's been no action in Madison regarding Measure Fifty at this point, but I would suspect that many of the municipal, uh, uh, TV stations, as well as those that rely on the revenue to support, uh, public access television, uh, have also sent those letters. And just to be aware, that, uh, the city has sent that out undercover from the cable committee. Uh, Library Committee. The Library Committee met on June seventeenth and, uh, Director Kathy Kobek, Anne Schoenborn, uh, Deanna McInnis, uh, Nicole Meverden, Sue Haas, and Lila Schlerf were in attendance. I unfortunately was not. I had, uh, a funeral and memorial get in the way, so I apologize for having to drop the ball, uh, uh, for, for attending that move, uh, that, that meeting. Uh, it was held at, uh, four P M. at the library on the seventeenth, and a motion was a, uh, approved by, uh, uh, excuse me. A motion to approve the agenda was made by Nicole Meverden and seconded by Sue Haas. The motion carried. Uh, there was no public input. A motion to approve the minutes of May twentieth, uh, was made, uh, seconded and, uh, approved. Friends of the Library Report, the library friends are planning a memorial in memory of longtime library friend Judy, help me out on this, Kathy.
Shrinka.
Shrinka. Uh, the Book Corner will be celebrating its second year anniversary this month. Library friends are planning an appreciation dinner for all library and Book Corner volunteers and library staff. If you haven't been to, uh, the Library Friends and the Book Corner, I'd encourage you, uh, to go visit. It's a great place to pick up that novel for reading at the beach, uh, while you're enjoying our summer sun. Directors Report, the summer reading program is going well with about a hundred and fifteen children and teens signed up in the first week. The summer reading program runs through July nineteenth, and, uh, past summer reading events, uh, include Blast Off to Summer Reading and the Zoo Mobile. How'd that go, Kathy? Good? Yep. Upcoming events, Navigation of, Navigation, Science of Exploration on July second, tomorrow. Raku at Clay on Steel on July fifth. If you wanna learn how to throw a pot, Raku is a very fun way to do it because you can see your results almost instantaneously. Uh, mini golf in the library, July ninth. Mini golf? Yeah, we're gonna have drivers and stuff, or are we just putting? Just putting, okay, all right. All right, Mayor, that, that leaves you out. Uh, no hooks, no shanks. Uh, Smores on, uh, at Long Term Care on July seventeenth. Diana has started at the new, uh, start, has started as the new children's librarian, so we're fully staffed again. Treasurers Report, revenues and disbursements were presented to the library board, and the library bills were, uh, motion was made to approve and carried. Old business, none. New business, finally got around to appoint, uh, to appointing the executive committee for, uh, uh, twenty nineteen. Anne Schoenborn, our longtime president, was, uh, was, was appointed as president again, Diana McInnis as vice president, and Julia Lasecki as secretary. First draft of the twenty twenty library budget was presented to the library board. There was no closed session, uh, uh, so there were no need to have an open session. The items for the next meeting will be a budget and then an adjournment. I also would say that at this point, I generally have a little sparkly for something for everybody. Uh, statistics for June, a hundred and six books were purchased, six audio books, and eighteen DVDs. Historically, um, I guess the old reliable would be to talk about July fourth, but there was another very, very historic event that occurred that began today. And I've got a, uh, two hundred and seventy-two-word remarks that were made to commemorate that event. And if the board, uh, and the council members and the audience approves, I'd like to read that for you. That event was the beginning of the Battle of Gettysburg. And the remarks proceeded, were preceded by a fella by the name of Edward Everett, who spoke for a little over two and a half hours. The next person that spoke spoke two hundred and seventy-two words for a little less than two minutes. And he said, fourscore and seven years ago, "Our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal. Now we are engaged in a great civil war, testing whether that nation, or any nation, so conceived and so dedicated, can long endure. We are met on a great battlefield of that war. We have come to dedicate a portion of that field as a final resting place for those who here gave their lives, that the nation might live. It is altogether fitting and proper that we should do this. But in a larger sense, we cannot dedicate, we cannot concentrate, we cannot hallow this ground. The brave men, living and dead, who struggled here, have consecrated it, far above our poor power to add or distract. The world will little note, nor long remember what we say here, but it can never forget what they did here. It is for us, the living, rather to be dedicated here to the unfinished work which they who fought here and have thus so far nobly advanced. It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead, take increased devotion to the cause with which they gave their full measure of devotion, that we were highly resolved to these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation, under God, shall have a new birth of freedom, and that the government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from earth." So while you're remembering the birth of a nation on the Fourth of July, remember, we also fought a civil war to ensure the same freedoms. Thanks.
Thank you, Jake. Any question, the library report? Kathy, did you have anything to add? Okay, thank you again, Jake. There was no medical board meeting, um, so we'll...
Saved you, John.
What's that?
Saved him.
Saved you, John?
Yeah.
No, saved you.
Saved you. Okay, then we will go on to utility, Lee.
Elgoma Utility Commission meeting on June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, was called to order by President Guy Hosh. At five thirty P M. in compliance with the open meeting law, all members are present. Other members, Scott Wees, Pete Hawk, and Nancy Johnson. President Guy Hosh welcomed new member Mary Kay Bennett. Uh, there was a motion and seconded to adopt the agenda. Motion carried. Internal organization meeting was Municipal Code thirteen dot, oh, one, two-way, states that internal organization shall occur in May. At the May meeting, the consensus of the group was to postpone the internal organization until June due to having a vacant seat in the commission. The commission conducted with the annual organization, internal organization. There was a motion made and seconded to appoint Guy Hosh as president. Roll call, motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to, uh, point, to, uh, appoint, uh, Dashlet as Secretary Treasurer. Roll call, vote, all yeses, motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to appoint Felice as Vice President. Roll call, vote, all yes, motion carried. Uh, there was a motion made and seconded to appoint Hosh and Felice as representatives on the Planning Commission. All, all votes, motion carried. There was a motion made and seconded to approve the previous meeting minutes, motion carried. New business, American Transmission Company, voluntary capital contributions were discussed. Elgoma Utility was offering the opportunity to contribute a payment of seven thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Elgoma has earned between three percent and sixteen percent on this investment. There was motion to, was made and seconded to, to recommend the A T C to purchase. Motion carried. W P P I Energy Community Contribution and Economic Development Funds News Release was issued on June eleventh, requested, requests are due by July eighth. Johnson led a discussion regarding the city's possible plans for potential conversion of existing streetlights to light emitting diodes, LEDs, and required revisions to Wisconsin Public Service Commission. Tariff language and rate schedules. On June thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, Johnson also met with the Public Works Director, a lighting contractor from N E W, Light Solutions and W P P I Energy, Energy Service Representatives to discuss the tariff language and the rate schedules. Once the city selects the LED lights and fixtures they plan to purchase on E S R, we'll review if projects qualify potential focus on energy incentives and possibility W P P I energy funding for municipal projects. Uh, after the city decides which LED fixtures, lights and fixtures will be purchased and which types of existing lights they will replace, Johnson will petition the W P S C for the new street lighting tariff language and rate schedules. For the May Utility Commission meeting, the General Managers' report indicated recommendation to replace the nineteen ninety-four Vermeer chipper with a two thousand nineteen Vermeer diesel chipper. Cost net of trade-in, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollars, total cost of sixty thousand, twenty-five, less the trade-in value of five thousand, five hundred. Utility and Public Works Department each share half of the cost, so the utility would rep, be responsible for twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. There was motion made and seconded and approved to, uh, purchase such item. Old business, two thousand nineteen water project updates, the main wa, the water main from the new river crossing and Culver Crossing projects are completed except for the fact that the Dog Park is too wet to move, to, to mobilize equipment and to finish the lawn repair. This week, the contractor been replacing water laterals on the north and south side of the Second Street Bridge. June twenty-fourth will be at ten A M. pre-construction meeting and one P M. public involvement meeting, both at City Hall regarding to two thousand nineteen Pfeiffer Brothers, Kiwanis County and Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Second Street, Annaphe River Bridge construction activities. The contractor plan to be, be into bore water main this week on the Bell Harbor condominium project for the city's tax increment district number three project. Verizon has been working on installing a temporary tower and will be removing their antennas from the rubbish street water tower once their attachments are removed and the new contractors are, the next contractors can be sandblasting the old paint off the tank. Please see the attached Managers' Report. Planning the commission update, no new utility projects. Hawk presented change order number one for contract forty-nine dash thirty-one dash fifteen dash oh two dash nineteen for the repairs and modifications and repainting and rehabilitation of the three hundred thousand gallon, uh, water tower. Remove the wall fed logo options of six thousand dollars for the south side tank as rubbish street end two, adding a Wisconsin Department of Natural required replacement of a roof vent on the north side tank on Greenfield Avenue at the cost of nine thousand dollars per the recommendation of Dixon Engineering Incorporated. The original contract award of three hundred, three hundred and three thousand dollars will be increased by the net total of three thousand dollars for the total award of three thousand, three hundred and six thousand dollars. Additional information is available at the, uh, Managers' Report. There was, a motion was made to approve and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Motion carried. There was a motion and seconded to approve the monthly finance reports. Motion carried. Felice recommended the commissions only need to receive the summary page of the sales analysis and rated return financial information each month reviewed. Recommendation was such. Uh, motion was made and seconded to approve the annual audit report. Motion carried. Managers' Report, Managers' Report was reviewed. Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources completed their sanitary survey visit of the utility water system. The W D N R, uh, mentioned that Elgoma's procedures and attention to the detail could be considered a model of how they would prefer all water departments to operate. This is a true testament to the devotion of our employees. Thank, thank you to our water operator and, and meter technician, Chris Masser, the two thousand eighteen District Number One Operator of the Year for his commitment and dedication. Also, big thank you to you, to the supporting staff for the excellent, uh, records. Managers' Report, the Wisconsin Public Service Commission completed an electric building audit. W P S C auditor complimented that there was one of the cleanest audits they ever seen. We share the results with other P P I, W P P I Energy and municipal electric utilities of Wisconsin Utilities and hope our experiences will assist their utilities in preparing for future audits. Thank you for, thank, to our staff for the exceptional results. Motion was made and seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at seven seventeen P M. Next meeting is on Wednesday, July seventeenth at five thirty P M.
Questions or comments? Pete, do you have anything to add? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Board of Review. Jamie?
Okay, the Board of Review was called to order at four o'clock on Thursday, June sixth. The board elected John Ortley to serve as the chairperson. Earl Krieger served as vice chair. The clerk referenced up-to-date training affidavits on file in the office for all members of the Board of Review. The clerk also reviewed new laws relating to the Board of Review, which allow property owners to deny the access, to deny the assessor access to their property and still appear at the Board of Review. The board adopted a policy regarding the procedure for sworn telephone testimony and sworn... sworn written testimony. They also adopted a policy regarding the procedure for waiver of Board of Review hearing requests. The assessor delivered the 2019 assessment report and assessor's affidavit. The board reviewed the rule, corrected description or calculation errors, added omitted property, eliminated double assessed properties, certified all corrections. There were two corrections to the 2018 assessment rule, one for a burned garage that was inaccurately assessed as being present on January 1st, and the other was for omitted personal property for Masonite after the assessor was informed that the business was moving out of the city. There were no changes made as a result of the open book, and we did have one person file an objection. Jim Thompson was present, he's the owner of 420 Lakeview Drive in Algoa. His total property assessment is $401,700. He believed his property assessment should have been $336,800. After both the assessor and the objector presented their cases, they fielded questions from each other and the Board of Review. After the hearing closed, the Board of Review by majority and roll call vote determined that the assessor's valuation was correct, and the board stood adjourned at six o'clock.
Questions or comments? Thanks Jamie. I'll accept the motion to approve the receipt of all the reports as stated. Moved by, moved by Lee, seconded by Kevin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Let's go to old business. First thing on the agenda is Ordinance 808. This is the second reading, amending the City of Algoa fee schedule for the City of Algoa. Again, this is the second reading, so if anybody has any questions at this point, otherwise I will accept a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Moved by Mitch.
Second.
Second by John. Roll call vote please.
Maring.
Aye.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Paddock.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Aye.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is Ordinance 811. Again, this is also the second reading. This is the property request by CTI, where we were taking, to make a long story short, the old parking lot that the DNR had owned in exchange for property that John purchased from Stoller Construction LLC, and we needed to do some rezoning, so this is the second reading of this so that we can rezone that property.
Move to approve Ordinance 811.
Moved by John, seconded by Lee. Any questions? Not, roll call vote.
Meverden.
Yes.
Paddock.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Maring.
Aye.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.
Thank you. Under new business, these are broke down by consideration of applications for new operator's license. I'm not going to read through them. Then it's broke down by renewal for operator's license, and then there's also temporary operator's license, and then it goes temporary Class B, Class B retail license, then there's also consideration for new combination Class B or in Class B liquor license, and then there is also consideration for application for amusement license. How would the council like to proceed?
Just to prove them all.
Prove them all, and you're making that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mitch, is there a second? By Lee or Kevin? Kevin? To approve the license under new operator's license, renewal operator license, temporary operator license, temporary B, Class B retail license, new combination Class B beer license and Class B liquor license, and also amusement license. Any questions on any of those? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. G is consideration of application for the fireworks display permit for a Spielball or fireworks for Shani Days. Yes, we will have fireworks this Shani Days. Excuse me?
No drones.
No drones, the drones are gone. This will be fireworks. The police, or the fire chief has seen the application, has approved it. We just need to have it come through council for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Jake.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Motion to approve the hiring of Kenneth Howar as part-time police officer for the City of Algoa Police Department.
So moved.
Moved by Scott.
Second.
Second by John. Any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Motion to authorize agreement in Wisconsin Department of Revenue for state debt collections.
So moved.
Moved by Jake, seconded by John. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. This one's a recommendation also from the Finance of Personnel to approve setting a monthly stipend for a cable volunteer for YouTube video uploads.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Scott. Questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you just go to YouTube and search on Algoa?
There is a Algoa Community Access Television page. There's probably only three, three videos out there right now.
Okay.
We didn't start yet.
Any other questions? Thank you. We need a motion to approve the purchase of the 2019 Vermeer drum style wood chipper that we're buying in halves with the utility.
So moved.
Moved by Jackie, seconded by Lee. Any questions? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Resolution 974 certifying transfer of land between Bucks Harbor LLC Parcel and Douglas and Heidi Johnson Parcel. That's a recommendation coming from the Planning Commission. Accept the motion. Moved by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Jackie. Any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Resolution 975, that's authorizing the Algoa Utilities to voluntarily contribute $7,630 to the American Transmission Company for additional capital needs.
So moved.
Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Lee. Any questions or comments? Not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Ordinance 812 relating to the confidentiality of information about income and expenses requested by the assessor in property assessment matters in the City of Algoa, this is the first reading, so it's just there for informational purposes only. And then item O is the update on South Lake Street Sewer and Water Project, which Matt already gave us, so we're all set on that. Okay, under Mayor's appointments, I have none, but under comments, I do want to refer to back in 2017, June of 2017, the city passed a resolution basically stating that they would be in favor of Assembly Bill 292 and Senate Bill 228, which pertains to the state prison that's located in Ashwabanon, Alloway, excuse me. The state was considering, basically looking at building a new prison. We passed a resolution stating that we were supporting it, and that also that the City of Algoa would desire to explore making the City of Algoa the new home for the privately-owned state-operated prison. This thing now has resurrected itself, it's kind of come out of the woodwork. It doesn't sound like Algoa would be a viable site, okay? But yet, there's people out there that I'm getting phone calls from, and I know City Hall has been getting calls saying, "What about the City of Algoa taking this prison?" Well, don't get too excited, people. It doesn't look like Algoa's going to have a state prison. There's too many things involved. Sitting down with the police chief, he would definitely not be in favor of it. The county, I met and talked to the county chair, Mr. Widener, he has concern. Luxembourg, of course, is supposedly in the running. This is, again, this is all secondhand, so I don't know how sincere the state is at looking at Luxembourg, but their village president is pursuing it supposedly with Representative Stefan, who was the one that brought this bill forward. So I just wanted to clear the air a little bit on that. It's going to be kind of hard to put a prison in an area, even Luxembourg, where you're so far from an interstate. That was one of the concerns that was expressed. The other thing is, where does the city get the property? The city would have to go out and would basically have to purchase property in order to do this, about 100 acres. Infrastructure would have to be updated, which we're probably in a pretty good, pretty good shape as far as our utilities and also our wastewater. But I just want to clear the area, the air that Algoa is not in the running at this point, so if things change, I will definitely let you know. The other thing is, this July 4th, the Violence Intervention Group is putting on a get-together down at Legion Park. I don't know what time it starts. Sarah, do you know what time it starts? It's kind of an all-day?
Yeah, it's kind of all-day. I think it's around lunchtime till late afternoon.
I know they're having some entertainment, they're having a dunk tank and stuff like that, so if anybody wants to volunteer to sit on the dunk tank, you can contact Virginia Hasky, and she'll be more than happy to accommodate you. I think there's also a ping-pong drop sometime during the day, but I just wanted to give them a little plug on that. Next thing, agenda items for the next meeting, does anybody in the council have any at this point? Okay, then we're going to, I'm going to accept the motion to go in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding vacant, full-time police officer positions.
So moved.
Moved by Scott, seconded by John. Roll call vote please.
Meverden.
Yes.
Paddock.
Yes.
Schmidt. Maring.
Chair.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Weez.
Yes.